Good evening. Ms. Clancy, would you lead us in the pleasantries?
Sure.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. All right. Consent agenda, Mr. Manager.
Consent agenda this evening for the approval of study on the and administrative specialist job description, Public Works Traffic Engineering Division, FY-23 budget amendment, Culpeper Parking Authority FY-23 budget amendment, acceptance of grant funds from the Department of Criminal Justice Services and budget adjustments for grant fund expenditures, Water Fund Capital FY-23 budget amendment, acceptance of grant funds from Virginia Tourism Corporation, uncollectible utility account write-offs, treasures reports, and minutes of previous meetings.
Motion to approve?
No move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. All right. 701, public forum. The public forum is an opportunity for town citizens, visitors, and group to come in or bring to our attention any town government-related issues. Please state your name and place of residence for the record. Limit your comments to three minutes. For groups present, you are requested to have a spokesperson. Is there anyone who would like to speak at this time?
Good evening. Jeffrey Mitchell, 802 South Blue Ridge Avenue. I didn't expect to be first, and so just 30 seconds here, see if I can find what I was going to quote. It was a quote I read by one of our founding fathers. It was one that struck me after the fireman's parade. It goes, "I like to see a man proud of the place in which he lives. I like to see a man live so that his place will be proud of him." I liked those words, the way they resonate, and the relevance for me was at the end of the parade, watching Public Works do an amazing job with street sweepers and leaf blowers take all the trash that had been left behind by people watching the parade. The police held the streets so they could work safely, and the street sweeper came through not once, not twice, but three different times. Who leaves this sort of trash in a place they live, that they love? I'm wondering if you were willing to say, let's flip the script. Let's ask these people to be accountable to the community in which they live, that they belong and they participate in. Ask them, at the end of the parade, please pick up your trash, deposit it somewhere. It's not the town's responsibility to clean up after you. It's yours to clean up the town. So again, let's repeat the quote from the founding father, that "I like to see a man proud of the place in which he lives. I like to see a man live so this place be proud of him." As you go forward in your deliberations, I'd ask that you consider enforcing some of the laws we have about littering. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. 801, Mr. Yea.
Okay. I move that council reappoint Michael Lysick to the Architectural Review Board for a four-year term, expiring May the 31st, 2027.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you. All right. 903-81, RR, reference ordinance number 0-2023-004, amending Chapter 3, animals, adding Section 3-11, keeping a foul of the town code in second reading. Andrew.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This came up back in March, the Personnel Ordinance Committee. We had a chance to incorporate some language we've been working on in our zoning and subdivision update into Chapter 3 and brought it to PNO in April for consideration. At that time, it was simply considering chickens. It was recommended for approval by the committee and brought to full counsel last month. In between committee and the council meeting, we received feedback from a number of citizens requesting an expansion of that beyond simply chickens, and so we prepared alternate language that would cover a broader array of foul that was considered alongside the chickens at last month's. Council directed us to move forward with the broader language for foul. So we have the second reading before you this evening. The recommendation is that council hold this second reading and adopt ordinance number O-2023-004, amending Chapter 3, animals, by adding Section 3-11, keeping a foul of the town code, and authorizes the mayor and clerk to execute the document, and further add a $100 fine to the fine and fee schedule for violations of this. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that council may have related to this matter.
I move the RR.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah. Did everybody on council receive the letter that Susan Williams wrote?
Yes.
Everybody, okay.
All right. Anybody else?
Yeah, just another comment, Mr. Mayor. So on that message from the Williams family, I guess I still continue to have, I still continue to have an issue with this. It seems like there'd be steps that we could take before we get to the step of having to create an ordinance with the fine schedule behind it. It seems like there's, if there's a specific issue that a resident is creating because of irresponsible chicken ownership, that there should be a way to approach that specific resident and deal with that on a one-to-one basis as opposed to creating yet more ordinances with yet more fines. That has to be enforced with yet more enforcement support. Ms. Williams was, I actually went down and talked to them today. I've spent the last few weeks, well, actually, a couple of months now, just driving around town, walking around town, trying to find the chicken problem, and there seems to be far fewer chickens these days than there were eight to 10 years ago. Eight to 10 years ago, there were chickens that seemed to be running amok all over the place, particularly around that Blue Ridge-Spariville intersection. But I'm not, I'm not finding that these days. Instead, I'm finding, at least a few residents that I've talked to that own chickens, I'm finding that these families really rely on the chickens that they have, whether it's two, six, or 12, that because of the health quality of the eggs, because of the budget support that raising your own chickens helps with, that, you know, sustainable, self-sufficient attribute that we love and enjoy, particularly here in the Culpeper area. I would just like to encourage us to find, find a different way to resolve this, rather than telling our fellow property owners how they should be and how they should not be using their property. For example, the family that I visited with had been raising chickens all their life, multiple generations. They know how to raise chickens. Whether we want them to add additional square footage to their coops, to their runs, it's something that we can impose and we can fine them if they don't agree, but I guess I'm just not, I just question whether or not that's our role. Should that be the decision that we make with this ordinance?
I think I agree with you, too. I think we need the ordinance, but I'm not sure we need a fine that heavy for the first time offender. We can give some kind of warning or correct the problem, citation of whatever.
We do have a corrective period before the fine would be enforced.
Right.
So it's not, we essentially have to give them 30-day period to be able to address it before they would be assessed a fine.
All right. Anyone else?
Well, we do have ordinance already that deal with noise. We have that on the books already. You're not supposed to have any animals on your property that's making noises that's audible for 50 feet or more. So we have that on the books. We have ordinances, state, local, state, and federal, that deals with property damage, vandalism, things like that. So if property owners are not being responsible with their chickens and their chickens are damaging someone's flower bed, then we already have a way to deal with that. If there's a rooster issue, we already have a way to deal with that. And I'm not, again, I'm just not sure that this, this amount of detail in an ordinance that now has to be enforced and, you know, increase, increase staff overtime or increase staff time to support it. And I appreciate the time staff has taken with this. I think the town had planned to roll this out as part of the unified zoning ordinance structure, but it was requested that it be broken out and expedited, and I appreciate all the time staff's put into that. But again, I'm not sure this is the answer that fixes the problem that we're seeing today.
Do we have an ordinance that chickens have to be in a pen?
That's what's proposed.
Okay. I mean, my grandparents had a farm. I was raised on a farm. I was raised in a little town, and the chickens didn't run free. Even on the farm, the chickens were in a coop and in a fenced-in area. Put the pen down. So I don't think it's asking too much to have the chickens in a pen with a coop.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead. Go ahead.
Yeah, I don't know how noise ordinance can, can be enforced. I mean, who would do, how would it be done? Who would do it at 3:00 in the morning? Call Gary Cole, say, hey, there's a rooster? And usually, the noise has to be present when whoever is there to enforce it can enforce it. And then who's that leave? And we don't have chicken police. We should not have chicken police.
Anyone else?
Just a question to clarify. What I'm hearing you say is that you believe that the issues that were brought to us by all of the citizens could be handled by things we already have on the books and that the concern is unintended consequences on individuals who do a good job of chicken owning if we were to put this through.
Yeah, I think that summarizes some of that, right? Yeah. I think that, again, maybe the chickens were hiding as I was driving or walking around, but the one family that I know that did have free-ranging chickens, they got rid of their chickens. They no longer have them. And all of the, and honestly, there were only three families that I've visited that own chickens, but they all have coops, they all have runs, they're all healthy. Talked to neighbors on two of those, and one neighbor did admit that they didn't like the sound of the rooster. But when I asked, would you call the non-emergency number to enforce the noise ordinance, they said, well, no, I don't want to get them in trouble. I just don't like roosters. So I, I just question, you know, why we would want to increase the amount of ordinances that we currently have on the books? Is this really the right way to fix this problem?
Anyone else? Roll call, Ms. Clerk.
Councilor Brown.
Aye.
Councilwoman Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Blanger.
Aye.
Ms. Reed.
Aye.
Councilmember Ramirez.
Aye.
Councilmember Schmidt.
Aye.
Councilmember Shor.
No.
Councilmember Taylor.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Yea.
Aye.
All right. 9.03, A2, RR, reference ordinance number 0-2023-006, amending Chapter and Article 3, fireworks of the town code, first reading. Andrew.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At that same meeting of the Personnel Ordinance Committee, it was brought to our attention that there were certain establishments within the town that were setting off pyrotechnics indoors. We did a little bit of research in terms of what was existing on the town code. Pyrotechnics essentially falls under the same definition of fireworks. We had thought from a common sense perspective that there likely wouldn't be the use of fireworks or pyrotechnics indoors, but it wasn't overtly specified within the ordinance. And so it was requested that we craft an ordinance amendment to add language specifying that the use of fireworks indoors is prohibited within the town. So this is the first reading of that, and the recommendation is the council hold this first reading of ordinance number O-2023-006, amending Chapter 8 of the town code by amendment Article 3 relating to fireworks on June 13, 2023, which the second reading would be scheduled, sorry, that on June 13, 2023, tonight. The second reading will be scheduled for next month, for July 11, 2023. Happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
Any discussion? All right, thank you. 9.048, RR, reference request by Bernice Utz, property owner, to appeal the Architectural Review Board ARB denial of case Z0F3860-2023. Jared.
Yes, sir. So I'm Jared Cruz. I work in the Town Planning Department. I also work as the staff liaison to the Architectural Review Board. So I'll give you all a quick overview of the case, and then I'll turn it over to Michael Lysick, chairman of the Architectural Review Board. He'll come up and speak on behalf of the ARB and the deliberations on this particular case. And finally, Ms. Bernice Utz, owner of the subject property, will come up to present her application for appeal of the board's decision. So on February 20th, staff were made aware of work in progress on the roof at 202 East Spencer Street. At that point, the chimneys on the residence had been removed, the roof had been partially replaced. After speaking with staff, the property owner submitted an application for a certificate of finding. COF 3860 involved two separate requests by Ms. Utz, one being the replacement of the roof and the second request being the removal of those chimneys. On March 22nd, the ARB voted to approve the replacement of the roof, but to deny the removal of the chimneys. Thereby, they stipulated that the chimneys should be built back to match those that were removed as closely as possible, ideally using the bricks that were removed. Following the March 22nd meeting, the property owner was made aware of her right to appeal the finding, and on April 20th, staff received the request to appeal the ARB decision to deny the removal of the chimneys. So the options before council tonight would be to either ratify the decision of the board, which would require the reconstruction of the chimneys at 202 East Spencer Street, or to overturn the decision of the ARB as requested by the property owner and not require reconstruction of the chimneys. With that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Lysick to present the perspective of the Architectural Review Board.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of the council. I am Mike Lysick. No Z in that, by the way. I am the chairman of the board and have been serving on that board for 28 years, and thanks to your vote of confidence, counting. So let me just present a couple of things to you. The Architectural Review Board is charged with guiding the preservation, rehabilitation, and restoration of buildings identified as contributing structures within the historic district. Like all other historic review boards, we are in turn guided by the Secretary of the Interior Standards for Rehabilitation, as well as our locally-developed Historic District Handbook. Over the past 20 years of service on this board, I have observed a fair, even-handed, and consistent administration of those guidelines over a wide variety of applications. To be continued. The decision being appealed this evening arises out of that consistency. We've had other applications from Spencer Street in the past. One of these was very similar to this one. The applicant wanted to make some porch repairs, replace the existing metal roof with a new one, and to remove the chimneys to the soffit line. The chimneys in this case were blowing over as they want to do in 120 years. In that case, the board rejected the request for chimney demolition and convinced the owner to rebuild them instead. In the case under your consideration this evening, the work was begun in the absence of the required application, including the removal of those chimneys. Upon notice from the town, the owner made a proper application for the board review. Citing the same guidelines that call for the retention of style-related architectural features, and in the interest of fairness and consistency, the board issued a certificate of finding that called for the erroneously removed chimney to be replaced. We on the board come before you tonight and ask you to take the issue of consistency into your decision. Our concern is that to do otherwise will imply a two-tier review process, one for the people who follow the historic district ordinance and comply accordingly, and a more lenient one for those who don't follow the ordinance and then request special treatment. I'll take any questions, or I'll go sit down.
Any question?
Hearing none. I shall sit.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Motion to approve? Oh, that's right.
Yeah, I would just introduce Ms. Bernice Utz. She's owner of the property at 202 East Spencer Street.
Good evening. I'm Bernice Utz, and the owner of 202 East Spencer Street. I'm here before you today to ask the board, or the town council, to give further consideration to the specifics of the case. Mr. Lysick references a previous case on my street, a house down the street from mine. There's four houses on Spencer Street right there that are within the historic district. And the house that he references where they made a ruling to convince the owner to adjust, you know, their plans and bring down both chimneys to help them with cost, that was a completely different house, and the chimneys were very different than what is at my property. They had all the way, you know, bricks from the ground up, and they were very defining features of that property. In fact, they were probably, aside from like just the regular architecture of the property, they were probably the only really architectural features of that property. But what I want you to consider today is my property and what the historic features of my property are that contribute to this district. And so I put in my, my package to you, an expla, you know, the town, the town of Culpeper's own form to the National Registered District, the National Registered District nomination form, that describes my property and the features of my property that are unique within the historic district. And they talk about the campanile, a three-story campanile with a pyramid roof, a hipped roof porch with lattice work, geometric balustrade, Italian, I don't know if I say that right, doors around, bullseye window, a campanile set in eight-pointed stars, heavy bracketing at the cornice, and rear telescoping additions. There's not one word in there about chimneys. There were three chimneys on my property, which obviously, when it was built, they were necessary because that's how the house was heated. Of course, as the property's been upgraded, it's now has central heat and air. Excuse me. And when the property became a multifamily use, which was prior to the historic district coming into being, prior to 1984, it was allowed to become a multifamily use. These, these fireplaces, you know, as a landlord, these fireplaces were boarded up in 1998. These fireplaces have not been used and not been in use since 1998. When I bought the property in 2014, it was in quite a bit of disrepair, and I have spent, you know, the last nine years, you know, putting a lot of money into the property, and especially, more recently, a $45,000 roof, which I'm very proud of, and it looks wonderful. And it's exactly what was there. It was important to me because, you know, I am a native Culpeper person. I grew up in this historic district. I lived in a house on East Stevens Street. I ran up and down these streets my entire life. These are hallowed ground to me. When I came back to Culpeper 38 years later, I thought, wow, Culpeper, you know, Davis Street is so different and Main Street, and everything looks wonderful. I mean, obviously, the historic district and the ARB, they've done a wonderful job. But the house that I grew up in is gone. And half of the school that I went to and the room that I sat in when I was nine years old, when they announced the president had been assassinated, is gone. So I know we can't save everything, but I'm doing my best to save most of this house and especially all of these features that are listed in everything that talks about the historic significance of my home. The chimneys, you know, as long as this is going to be rental property, those fireplaces are not going to be used. But they were only taken down to just below the roof line, so the fireplaces are still there. If at any point in the future, somebody wants to convert this back to a single-family home or they want to convert it to some other use, I don't know, bed and breakfast or some other use where fireplaces might be, you know, a nice thing to have and would be useful, they can put the bricks above the roof line at that time. But the problem I have is, you know, if I, if I had tons of money and this money was not an issue, we wouldn't even be here, because obviously, I'd just put the chimneys back. But I have to make choices as to the things that I can spend the money on, and, and right now, it's like there are other things that need to be replaced, the window, the ocular window needs to be repaired. And I'd rather spend money on those things that are mentioned in this, the features of this house, than to, you know, I still have one chimney on the roof, and certainly, you know, after going through all this, it's certainly my plan to maintain that chimney, make sure it stays up there. Like I said, the house was in quite a bit disrepair, so obviously, these chimneys were not maintained over time as they had deteriorated so badly that they had to come down in order to put the new roof on, which I needed because, you know, the interior of the house, and that's the other thing. The ARB is only concerned with the exterior of the house and how the exterior looks. As the owner of the property, I am concerned about the entire house. You know, the chimney was fail, I mean, the roof was failing. I had half of a ceiling in a bedroom fall down in the middle of the night, and thank goodness it didn't fall down on the tenant. Lots of water damage. I had to replace the roof. And, you know, obviously, I'm asking you to, the other thing I did, and another thing I want to say, in preparation for this hearing, I spent over a week in the plant, in the planner's office, going through 40 years of minutes, and I want to give us, the staff was wonderful. Jared and Sandy were great and helped me tremendously. And so I went through 40 years of minutes of this, of this historic stuff to see what's going on, and I put it in my case, you know, in my package for you, that in the 40 years, there have been six cases that had specifically to do with chimneys. And of those cases, three of them were asked to remove and they were approved. One of them asked to rebuild the chimney because the prior owner had taken it down. Of course, they approved that to put the chimney back. And then the other cases, the one in Spencer Street, as we've already discussed. But I also examined the whole district and found numerous examples of structure, of houses that had new roofs put on them and no chimneys on them. And I listed those in my thing for you, too. So basically, I contend that my property provides a classic example to the town's historic district of a more modest residential building of the time, and it has notable architecture as described, as I've already described to you. And these items include the three-story campanile with pyramid roof, the bullseye window set in eight-pointed stars, the hip porch roof, and the scroll brackets and square columns. The, so putting the new roof on is protecting that pyramid, you know, putting the new pyramid roof over the three-story campanile will help to preserve that for future years. I need to replace the bullseye window that's, right now, is only being held up by duct tape. And I, it's, you know, like I said, I grew up here. These properties meant a lot to me. you know, like I said, I grew up here. These properties meant a lot to me. It was a dream of mine to own one of these old houses that I grew up running up and down these streets, looking at my entire life. And I think I've been a good steward of maintaining this property. And so I just, I, you know, I, as a multifamily rental unit right now, where the fireplaces are not going to be used, it doesn't make any sense to me to put the chimneys back on the roof, to cut holes in my roof, new roof, and put chimneys back up that are never going to be used. So I ask for your consideration in a broader perspective than what the ARB would, you know, have to look at. I mean, I understand the ruling they made and why they made it, but I think the town council can take a broader perspective as to what my contributions are to this historic district, and if the stack of bricks above the roof line are really necessary. Alternatively, if you believe that it, you know, you must agree with the ARB, alternatively, I want you to consider that I may be allowed to construct faux chimneys above, you know, to sit on top of the roof, so I don't have to cut into the roof and just make it look like the chimneys that were there as an alternative. But obviously, I, the house next door to me, like I said, there are four houses right there. The house next door to me put a new roof on and took down chimneys. Nobody said anything. The house next to that put a new roof on, took down chimneys. Nobody said anything. But we're in this situation. It's a, it's a unique kind of situation in that I want to do what's right for the town, but I also want to do, you know, something that makes sense. I totally believe in historic, I think there was a quote in here from somebody I got out of one of the minutes, that we have to consider historic preservation with, but with some common sense. So I appreciate your consideration. Thank you very much. Any questions?
First, I want to say thank you for coming tonight, and I appreciate, you know, it sounds like your house is very important to you, growing up in Culpeper, and all of the history is very important to you, and you'd like to find a balance between that which is important to you and which is important to the historic district in a way that makes sense. I just have one question. Were you aware of the process that the ARB has to make changes to the external part of, the external, external stuff in the house in the historic district before you started to make?
I was aware that my house, interestingly, when I bought the house, I was not, there was nowhere in the purchase of the house where it said anything about being in a historic district. You know, if you buy a house that's in a homeowner's association, all that's disclosed to you. In the process of buying the house, that was not disclosed to me. So when I initially bought it, I did not know that I was in a historic district. I actually thought, because I grew up here and so familiar with that whole area, I thought like all the beautiful plantation homes on Southeast Street, you know, to me, it made sense. And there are even placards saying, you're entering historic Southeast Street, you know, I thought, well, but certainly there in a historic district. But then I find out, they're not. They're not subject to any of this. So I knew, and I discussed it with the contractor that I got to put the roof on, and I, so I, anything, I'm a victim of trusting the process. I believe that anything that would have been necessary from the town, that he would have taken care of. And then I find out that when you go to the town and you're replacing something with like for like, that you don't need a permit. But apparently, what I didn't know, or didn't realize, or didn't concentrate on at the time, my mother lives in this house. And when I bought this house, it's because my mom wanted to live in town. And so I bought the house and fixed up the apartment for my mom, and a year ago, she went in hospice in the property, in my, in the house. So we're taking care of her there. So I trusted, you know, that the process would protect me, and it didn't. I needed the roof replaced. It had suffered water damage the previous July, and then, you know, it took, because of supply chain issues, it took, he didn't start the roof till this past January to get the, the materials. So I assumed in that amount of time, when I signed the contract with him, and that everything had been taken care of. But obviously, and then, you know, if, obviously, knowing what I know now, if I had made application to the ARB, obviously, they would have made me reconstruct the chimneys, which still wouldn't have been necessary because they won't be used. But so it was just for the looks. There was one member on the ARB who had some personal bias in that decision because he grew up across the street from my property, and he was lamenting the fact that, you know, something he came out of his house every day and saw is now gone. Well, you know, when I came back after thirty-eight years, my whole house was gone. So what I want the town council to consider is, in the bigger scheme of things, are these two small chimneys on this house really that important to the historic district? And if they are, you know, obviously, accept whatever decision you come up with. Like I said, anybody, if they change the use of the property in the future, they go back to being a single-family home, they want to use the fireplaces, they can build the chimneys. The fireplaces are still there. The only thing that was taken down was what's called the stack, which was, was above the roof line. And, and the roofer told me that the one chimney on the East Street side, what, the, the, what's it called, the stuff that goes in between the bricks, was completely gone. There was a dry stack. And he had advised me that if I had grandchildren or anybody at the property, to not let them even go on that side of the property because it was going to fall down any minute. And then when they were taking off the old roof, the other chimney, you know, when they tried to go take the roof off, he said the bricks that hold it on or that hold it, they're completely gone. So the chimneys would have had to been rebuilt in order, you know, before they could, before they could have put the roof on. So that would have delayed the whole process, too.
That is, thank you.
Thank you.
I, I would just quickly remind you all that, so the, the vote tonight would be to either ratify the ARB's decision to require that the chimneys be rebuilt, or to overturn that decision and allow the roof to remain as is without the chimneys. One last quick note, Ms. Utz had mentioned the alternative wherein a faux chimney would be placed above the roof line. If you all, if your desire would be to see that option pursued, staff would urge that you ratify the decision of the architectural review board, and then that could be brought back to the ARB as a new certificate of finding request. And I'm happy to answer any questions you have for staff, if you all have anything for me.
Mr. Mayor, all right, so the, this third option with the faux chimneys, has that been presented to the ARB at all, or discussed?
It did not come up during the initial hearing. I, I've discussed it outside of those meetings with a couple individual members, and it could certainly be brought back as a new request, but it did not come up in that initial meeting.
Or we could approve it.
Well, that's why I'm getting at, see, procedurally, what's correct here is to ratify the decision ARB and then have it go back?
Right. So the way our ordinance language is written, council essentially is empowered to either ratify or deny the two decisions. If it goes an additional level of appeal to, to the courts, they can amend the decision, sort of like what you're saying, and actually change that determination.
Well, I understand all that, but do we have to go that far to talk about a faux chimney?
I would say the options here tonight would be to either ratify the ARB's decision or overturn it.
Yes, the answer to your question is yes. We have to go that far.
Yeah, we would definitely like to find a way to, appreciate the, the option that the homeowners presented with the faux chimneys, or if there is an option where it sounds like the homeowner is, is not against the chimneys philosophically, it's just a budget-driven decision for right now. If there was a way to defer that part of this change, if the ARB could consider something like that, some kind of a progressive decision, where the homeowner could come back at a later time to take care of the chimneys. But, so if we ratify tonight, is it in, within our minutes, Mr. Mayor, that the discussion regarding the faux chimneys would be encouraged for the ARB to consider, is that?
Is it? Chris, no.
Just the, just the conference, we need to request that be considered.
By the, the ARB, not, not the town.
Okay.
I have a question. And that would be, as you mentioned, a appropriate or reasonable compromise?
Well, I can't answer that.
Which, deferring. No, 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 I'm not saying that. I'm asking.
The property would be less expensive.
I was asking if that would be something she would be interested in, like she said, not that. And if she would then request it.
Mr. Mayor, so my understanding is it still has to go, has to be, has to be deliberated by the ARB?
It would. And hypothetically, if it were to be denied, again, it could come back as a second appeal to you all of that decision.
Yeah, we've gone through that scenario before. Anyway, for me, Mr. Mayor, overturning it is not an option. So I move to ratify the decision of the ARB.
Second.
Roll call, Mr.?
There might be some discussion, Mr. Mayor. Anybody want discussion here?
Well, I was just going to say that I appreciate what you were doing with that, with that home. I see it every day as well. It's in my neighborhood. I do take very seriously the work of the ARB, and, you know, it's not an easy, easy task. But they do, if they are objective and follow the guidelines, I think we need to be supportive of that. All this meeting, I'm looking at it salubrious, and I know your chimneys were not like that, but they're more than a pile of bricks. They are a significant feature of a home. And if you imagine that without the chimneys, I, I think it gives more credence to what we're trying to do with historic preservation in our town as well. So I agree with supporting the ARB, honestly.
Anybody else? Roll call.
Councilwoman Brown.
Aye.
Councilwoman Blanty.
Aye.
Councilwoman Brinkin.
Aye.
Mary.
Aye.
Councilwoman Regis.
Aye.
Councilwoman Schmidt.
Aye.
Councilwoman Shor.
Aye.
Councilwoman Taylor.
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Town manager report. Mr. Manager, you'd like to add something to that?
Yes, I do have one item I would like to add. I would like to ask you to help me congratulate Chief Chris Settle for recently receiving a master's degree in public safety administration from UVA. I know that was a huge accomplishment, and I think it's worth noting tonight.
Mr. Chief, would you like to make, do a little short speech?
No.
Show us how you walked across that wall.
You don't want to know. I don't want to put everybody to sleep. I just want to thank the town council, Mr. Manager, and the HR Director, Mary Bruner, for their support through this whole process, last two and a half years. I did learn a lot, so I'm hopefully, hoping to put that, all that knowledge to good use for many, many years to come. So thank you for your support.
Thank you.
Good work.
And, and there more questions or comments? If not, we all adjourn.